Regular meeting of the Campbell County Board of Education at this time. Ms. Heatherly, if you'll lead us in the prayer. Mr. Milligan, lead us in please.
Heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks and praise for every blessing. God, thank you so much for this beautiful day and all of the provisions that you provided for us, our needs. You are so good to us every single day of our lives. And God, I thank you so much for the privilege of coming here tonight to make decisions that is going to strengthen our school system and help our students to achieve their goals in high school and kindergarten to high school. And God, I pray that you would bless our students today, and I pray that you would give them guidance on their new journey as the seniors leave and go out into their life's journey. I pray, Lord, you'd bless our board members tonight, give us all leadership from you and discernment that we would make the right decisions that would benefit our children. God, thank you for Jennifer as she has led this county educational system to new heights. I thank you, God, for her daily commitment to this school system. And I pray your blessings on Johnny as he chairs this meeting and everything that we do tonight. And I'll give you the honor and the praise and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Callero? Okay, that's right. Yeah, we forgot how to use these. It's been a while.
See, I already forgot.
Okay. Working out. I hate them things. Nah, isn't that something? Ain't that something?
Hurd, present. Creighton, present. Fields, present. Heatherling, present. James, absent. Leslie, present. Lester, present. Miller, present. Morgan, present. Ryan, present.
Thank you. Recognition of guests, Larry Rector and Dr. Thomas with DaySpring Health.
Thank you for being here. We're looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you so much for having us here. My name is Dr. Thomas. I'm Georgie Thomas from DaySpring Health. Sorry, I feel like I've got a roundabout here. We wanted to add, this is our CFO, Larry Rector. Larry is our CFO and CEO. I am the Chief Medical Officer and CEO of Health in Jellico and Williamsburg. What we wanted to do today is present to you all a proposal that we have to come and be able to provide school health in our Jellico clinics, I'm sorry, in our Jellico High School and Jellico Elementary School. Currently, we actually have a school clinic in Williamsburg Independent System. We've been in that school district for about two years now. We have an in clinic, we actually have a clinic in the school itself, and we've been doing it for about two, two and a half years. The school came to us and said, hey, would you be willing to partner with us and offer a clinic? We actually went in and built a clinic in there and have been seeing our kiddos there. And that's about 850 students. And so recently, we came upon a grant that we could talk for. And one of the first things that people in Jellico said is, what about Jellico? What about Jellico? Why are you, why are you going on in the Kentucky side? Why don't you do something here for us? And so we reached out to the school and said, would you want DaySpring to be in the Jellico schools? And they said, yes, please consider us. And so we put a proposal that we wanted to present to you all today. So the whole idea of vision for our school health is that we want to promote high-quality medical, dental, behavioral health for our students and staff where they are and when they need the care the most. That's, that's really critical, is to keep our kiddos in school, keep our teachers in school, and take care of them when we can. So the whole idea is that school health must be reimagined. The truth is, is that care must be high-quality and that it must be integrated, right? And it must be sustainable. It is really important for us to be able to take care of our kids in the schools, take care of their needs, that we need to have quality care that is going to take care of them right where they are and then make sure that they continue ongoing care. Right now, school health is very disjointed. And it's not because we've got bad nurses, we've got amazing nurses, actually, but it's so disjointed. Our kids are coming and they've got acute care. They've got their needs, they've got first aid needs, right? They, they have chronic care. So we've got diabetic children, we've got asthmatics that need the care that they need. Medications need to be given to them during the school year. And a lot of times, we're, we're giving it to our elementary school teachers or the principals who are great, but don't have a lot of enough background. Same thing with vaccines. Our kids need to get their vaccines, and it's all disjointed. At the same time, we've got faculty. If they, if they get sick, if they've got a cold, if they've got a UTI, they've got to take that day off, get it to their primary care, and then get the care that they need, and they may not be back for holidays. So trying to reimagine that, what does that look like if we were able to take care of our kids, our faculty, and keep them in the school system well? Not to mention, we live in there with a lot of dental care, a lot of dental cavities and care. And kids come to school in vain and not being able to concentrate, how do we take care of them? How about behavioral health? How do we integrate that too? Especially when you've got kids who repeatedly are missing school over and over and over again, because really, they're just hurting inside. And what if we were able to integrate that behavioral health to those kids pretty quickly and get them the care that they need? Now, and so that's the whole idea of reimagining the having primary care in the school itself. So there's different kinds of visits. There's the basic nurse visits, right? So kids coming in and saying, I scraped my, scraped my knee at gym, or I'm kind of feeling dizzy. That's the basic nurse visits. But then there's expanded nurse visits where kids are saying, I've got asthma and I'm not feeling good, I'm really short of breath. So we can get those in as well. Then there's a provider visits. Now, most of the care is usually at the nurses. Again, if you've got good nurses, you're doing really, really well. But what if that kid comes and says, I'm coughing, I'm short of breath, or I've got, I'm wearing an IP or whatever? But what if we were able to take care of them right there and then and connect them with possibly their PA through telehealth? What if we were able to connect them with the behavioral health specialist while right there? That's the whole idea of getting a sustained, integrated school health. Now, this is a very busy slide that I'm showing right now, talking about all the things that a nurse can do. Of course, she can take care of the kiddo with headaches, nausea, small abrasions, right? A minor sprain, she can take care of that rash, or even evaluation for lice. But then some of the nurses, especially if they're trained well, if they've got good provider background, they can do things that are even further, like evaluate that dizziness, evaluate the shortness of breath, or asthma, clean out stomas, clean out, and take care of those diabetic needs. So there's a whole bunch of things that especially if you've got a good provider backing up that nurse, you can, you can get that nurse to take care of our kiddos right there and not have to take them out of school. And then, of course, the provider, of course, can jump in and help with the bigger stuff, like the UTIs, the bigger evaluations, and accesses on eye injuries and stuff like that. So what our vision is, and what we've done at Williamsburg, is we partnered with Williamsburg Independent School to say, let's put two exam rooms. And this is actually what the exam room looks like. It looks like a clinic in the, in the, in the school itself. It's got an exam table, it's got two rooms with exam tables, it's got testing, it's got labs, it's got vaccines, it's got the whole gamut in this, and it's a beautiful setting. And they, they helped us set that up, and it's gorgeous. And frankly, you go in and it's exactly like being at your primary care clinic. It's got the two, they're in there, it's got the two exam rooms, it's got the bathroom, it's got a waiting area, it looks exactly like you would at a primary care clinic. Our recommendation for Jellico is that we would, because we're looking at Jellico Elementary and looking at Jellico High School, we would put a main clinic at the Jellico Elementary. And the reason is that there's about 200, 225 kids at the Jellico Elementary, and especially those little kiddos that need more help, those are the ones that are falling all over themselves. They're the ones scraping themselves, they're the ones that are getting short of breath, they're the ones that are having issues. And so we're finding that it's probably best to take care of those kids right there in that school. And then, and then at that high school, we would have what we have, a satellite location as well. So we have a main clinic and then nurses' units, okay? The staffing would be staffed by LPNs at both sites, the main clinic and at the, at the nurses' unit. We would locate them, locate the main clinic at the elementary school, and then the nurses' unit at the, at the high school. We would also offer nurse visits and what we call telehealth visits. So if you've got a nurse that says, I'm not sure about Johnny, I'm kind of concerned his fevers are more than just a normal cold, or whatever, we would telehealth them immediately to our PA at our clinic, and they would get seen immediately. Our, our PAs and our behavioral health would be on call for those kiddos as long as they are, they need to be seen. And so they would be seen in real time at that time. The medications, so at the main clinic, as well as the nurses' units, we, we would be able to provide the students medicines. So Johnny needs asthma medicines, he would go to the nurse, and the nurse would be the one to provide those asthma medicines. We have an inventory of over-the-counter medicines that we would give to the kiddos as well. So if kids come in and they've got headache, we would give them Tylenol or Motri, depending on what the kid, the kid's background looks like. Injections, so if someone, if a teacher needs those second shots, an antibiotic shot, steroid, Thoradol, that would be at the main clinic, there would not be at the nurses' clinic. Vaccines, right now, we would do, come in and do vaccine affairs. So in our Williamsburg clinic, we actually come in and do flu clinics. When hepatitis A was a big thing, we partnered, and we actually came in and gave them vaccines and made that available. Again, this is only if we have the correct consent. We're not just going to just take these kids and just give them stuff that they, that parents refuse. So it would be a proper consent that will allow us to know if Johnny can be seen at all at our clinic, if we can give him the care, but we would always call the parents. So if Johnny came in to see us for a cold, we would call Johnny's mom and say, hey, Johnny's in the clinic, we think he's got a cold, can we go ahead and treat him? Can we go ahead and give him the, do you want us to do labs on him and stuff? We would definitely have first aid available at both, both main clinic and the nurses' and at the nurses' unit. We would have crash kits at both sites as well. Lab, we would do onsite strap screening, mono screening, loose screening, urine analysis, and also even COVID. So depending on where we are by next call, we would be doing COVID testing at the schools as well. So that way, again, your kid can be seen at the clinic, if he, they can get the strap screen, their mono screen if they need to, COVID screen if they need to. And so that way, we kind of have a better idea of how that's going. We would not be doing blood draws at the clinic, okay? Equipment, we are prepared to come in and equip the, the main clinic with, well, all the clinics with, you know, blood pressure kits, pulse oximeters, thermometers, glucometers, and nebulizers, so when kids need their breathing machines, we would be doing vision screenings, hearing screens, and then eye kits. We would have that definitely at the main clinic and then some at the nurses' unit at the high school. So before we do that, I wanted to tell you all the equipment and stuff that we are looking at. We are looking at about $95,000 of material that we, DaySpring, would put in our two clinics. So we're coming in saying, in order to equip and take care of, we want the best quality, best equipment to take care of our kids where they need to be taken care of. And so all the equipments that we're talking about, just the eye kit alone is $7,000. And so we're ready to say, we're willing to put that money in to invest in our school system. Services we do not offer for students, because of the sensitive nature of some of the issues that our kids are going to be experiencing, there's a couple of things that we're not going to do. We're not going to do drug screens. And, and, and yes, some parents want us to do drug screens, but the truth is, we want to partner with your kids. We want to take care of them, we want to build a relationship with them. So Johnny thinks that every time he sees Dr. Thomas, Dr. Thomas is going to do a drug screen, I think I'm not going to win him over, right? But we want to take care of them, but then we also have said, we don't do drug screens. And that's been very helpful at the other, at the other school sites. We're not going to do birth control. That is not our role. That really needs to be at, at the primary care group, and ideally, especially in the settings that we're at, we'd like our, the parents to be involved too. So we're not doing birth control, we're not going to be doing homebound certification. The goal is to keep our kids in school, not out of school. So we're not going to be doing that. So we're very upfront with what we can and cannot do, and part of that is we're not going to do those three. So what we bring to the table, quality healthcare, experience in school health, which kind of saying, we've done this, this is not our first rodeo, we want to be able to provide really good school health, and I think our experiences at Williamsburg has shown that we can do it. We want to do streamlined, streamlined processes, protocols, training, and we're going to train the nurses to do that, and they'll be working behind us. We're going to have standardized rooms, supplies, and equipment, so that we know what the equipment is to take care of the kiddos, and like I said, about $95,000 worth of insurance. So I'm going to hand it over to my partner here, Larry, to continue.
So when you hear about all this amount of equipment, all these services, and if you're like me, and you put on your, well, how are you going to pay for that? How are you going to make that work? And not just in year one, how are you going to make that work for the long haul? To live, to share a little bit about DaySpring as a reminder, DaySpring Health is a nonprofit, federally qualified health center. Like, our goal, our mission is to provide active healthcare to everyone. So partnering with the schools is part of our mission. And as Georgie mentioned, we're looking at grants to help make this sustainable. And I always like to remind leadership that what we do, although we talk about money, spend a lot of time talking about money and how to make it sustainable, money is not the goal. Like, we are meeting here not because how to make this, manage this sustainable. Money is just a fuel. In order to make this sustainable, it's balancing the cost of high-quality care with low reimbursement models. What we get per encounter is pretty small as a nonprofit. So it demands us to be creative and to focus on making this sustainable beyond year one and two. So this is sustainable by partnering together and thinking about what assets we bring to the table as both entities. Jellico brings a strong reputation and great staff and the space and equipment that you all have been considering offering to me as possible. As Georgie mentioned, DaySpring is bringing our reputation, our staff, and our medical expertise, but bringing those assets together is what's going to make this sustainable for the long haul. To think about a little bit of how this works, we, based on projections of the number of students, number of staff, what we already see our Williamsburg location, we're projecting about 2,200 to 3,600 nurse encounters and provider encounters per year. It's not that a lot. We would predict that based on growing trust, that those numbers would grow over time, and that's what we've seen at other schools. And if you were to ask other community health centers that do this, that's what they see initially. It's a year one, and then grows. But again, as a federally qualified health center, FQHC, those nursing encounters are not built, so the only thing that we can charge for is when the encounter is with a physician So the breakdown of these shared resources that we are proposing is that Jellico would provide two LPNs. And then clinic space, as Georgie had mentioned, the space in the elementary school, and then utilities assigned to the space. DaySpring would contribute the $95,000 or more in equipment, access to a PA, and even behavioral health, we have telehealth, all operating hours per month. We would offer supervision of the LPNs provided by the school. We would also contribute an investment of $25,000 to $45,000 a year. Essentially, that investment is a projected loss on operations that we would take on. And then we would also discuss additional opportunities in terms of having people on staff onsite. So what does the cost of shared, sharing provide? And this is the idea, I love that you all's mission statement is this idea of excellence for every student every day. When we think about what we are trying to provide care for, and our desire is to provide excellent services. And this is a busy slide, but it's the idea of what are the benefits for the staff, benefits for the students, but it goes beyond that. It goes to the administration. It offloads this burden of administrative and nursing encounters, allocates resources to the sense of the nursing station back to the classroom. The board, you all's benefit, this idea of anticipated improved attendance rates. We have seen this in Williamsburg. Their attendance rates have increased by having this. Their attendance rates of their staff have increased by having this onsite. And then strengthen the competitive advantage to attract students, showing that the Jellico schools are great and continue to be great. So for like this easy three steps, you know, it's not just that you all consider this offering. Our board is aware that we are bringing this to you all, and what we consider as the shared model. Getting approval on both sides, at that point, we are going to take on the heavy lifting. We are going to get the equipment set up. And then after that, it's just enjoying focusing on goals. I'm going to back off to our time.
So our ask is really a partnership, ensuring school health is high-quality, sustainable for all students, staff, and boards. That's what we want. That is our goal. As you can see, this is not, I'm going to make, actually, if you look at a school health loses clinics a lot of money. But I can tell you, when we went into WISD two, three years ago, I had one of the Jellico, Jellico community members come to me, take me aside, she's a good friend of mine, said, Georgie, when are you going to be in Jellico? Why did you not come to Jellico first? And, and all I had to say is, well, the Williamsburg approached us first. But as soon as we heard, we're going to come to Jellico. And this is me making a good, I'm that promise. We desire to take care of our kids. Are we, I, by the way, I've been in Jellico for 21 years, so I've been a family doctor, and a family physician, I've been in Jellico for 21 years. We bought our house in Jellico. In few years, I have seen precious kids that I've delivered, taken care of, and seen grow up. And so I believe in our community, and this is us saying, let us do it. And so if there is a grant out there that hopefully we can get, but without the grant, I'm wanting to do that. And so that's why it's so important to have Larry say, yes, this is important, and even if it means $25,000 to $45,000 out, like, from DaySpring, we want to do this because I think it's good, it's the right thing. So I appreciate you guys coming and listening to us. Our goal is quality care when and where our kids need us the most, and this is where they need us the most, in the schools where they are most of the time. So that's it. Any questions that I can answer?
I have a little, huge student in having behavioral health. Have they, is it just a kid that's like one officer, somebody you all can ask them to continue to place?
Yes, so good question. So the question is, how does behavioral health work? And so the idea is that if there is a student that is having issues, we would have, we'd have a behavioral health person that's working in our clinics, and so we would do a warm handoff. So the LPN that's there can say, hey, we've got a kiddo that's really struggling with depression, anxiety, whatever the case might be. And if the parents are okay with us doing that, then we would have a telehealth visit with that child. And so depending on, of course, if the kid's really small, we're not going to be able to do it, but this definitely works in the higher clinics.
So Thomas has a quick question. Is there a reason why you don't do blood draws?
So good question. So blood draws are, you know, add a lot more. So DaySpring, Jellico is right across the street.
So just convenient.
So it's convenient. So we, in our Williamsburg office, we do because our offices are much further away than the main clinic.
This is purely logistical.
It's a logistical thing, yes. So if we can make this work and do blood draws at the clinic itself, we'd love.
The second question would be, is it prohibited to do physical examinations for participation in school when infected?
Yes, no, we do, we do that all the time. We still do that.
And then the question for this director, you talked about the reimbursement rate, would that be comparable back here in the state of Ohio in the ballpark? It's comparable, but again, all the nurses have to do. Right, right. Just for your other service providers, it'd be kind of aligned with what you would expect in federal state.
Okay, and I just want to say, Dr. Thomas and Ms. Director, such an impressive clinic that we saw at, in Williamsburg, and such wonderful comments that people had to say about it. I think it would be definitely an asset to the community and Jellico at those schools. And we already have a full-time nurse that shared at both locations that works part-time, and we would just have to add a nurse, either full-time or part-time, at one of those schools. Yeah, I think it's great. And Elgin, we already participate in the Elgin Dental Program that you do as well, and that has been very successful in your schools. And Alyssa was able to go with us to tour your clinic in Williamsburg and your dental office, so very impressive.
If I can just clarify one more thing, and this is quite special for the community, I want people to realize, we are not trying to be the primary care provider for those kids, okay? So if they are seeing Dr. Wilkins or Chad or whatever, we want them to continue seeing those primary care providers, and we're not going to try and take those kids away from them. We're just trying to take care of them when they're in the school, right? And when they're in the school, we're going to take care of them, but then we will be communicating to their primary care provider, so I don't want that to be a question at all. We want to pump back to their primary care providers if that's what it's, what it's going to be.
Well, I'd just like to thank you for coming and making this presentation, and I know it will be a blessing in the future for a lot of kids over there. I need that intervention.
Do you have the same, like HIPAA, student privacy, electronic records and stuff like that?
Right, so we have our electronic micro records, which is what we have at our clinics right now, and we are bound by the same controls and.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hold you out for just a second. I've been with this thirty years now, representing this system, primarily a collaborative, especially community, doing medical practices in Williamsburg. This would be the single most impressive presentation I've seen in thirty years of practicing, calling, dealing with first management, and how we take this deal, and I'm going to start in a public way, and we'll see what we follow. This is amazing. I say that sincerely, wearing my other hat, it's not a lawyer's hat. This is a can't miss opportunity for your school system.
Yes, I feel the same way. I talked to Mr. Chadwell at Jellico Elementary, and he's really beyond excited about, about having it, and we certainly thank you. Any more questions?
No, but I can say, when we, I visited the clinic, we went up there, and very impressive. Very well ran, I mean, it looked exactly like an exam room, a doctor's office, so it was very professional, and it was, yeah, very impressive.
You just need to expand over this way to.
I'll also say, it would change the perception of our schools and community. So we appreciate that. And you will know that if the DaySpring logo on it, it has to be called, it's got to be excellence. When we went to WISD in Williamsburg, they were starting off with a small little closet, and we said, no, we need, we need something that looks and feels like a clinic, that kids can feel comfortable and safe in, and our parents can feel comfortable and safe in. So yes, if it's not excellent, we're not going to do it. So I will also just remind you all. So I will also just remind you all, we will be presenting this to our board next week. So we'd like, we would like to have it ready for this board meeting, but because our board meetings next week, we've got to make sure that our board's on board as well, I don't see why they wouldn't do it, and that they're, we talked about it, they're excited already, but for, for disclosure, if you want to make sure our board's on, on, like, too.
And I'll look forward to continued communication with you, and we'll just see how that goes after you make your board, so we'll stay in contact.
Okay. Okay, it's, next is our teacher, principal, supervisor of the year award, Ms. Fields.
I just want to say, first of all, I want to say that our teachers and supervisors and principals are always the ones who are recognizing our students and our staff, so it is so nice to look out and see children, spouses, parents here to recognize our teacher, supervisor of the year, and principal of the year. So it's very well deserved, it's nice for you to have it turned to receive the recognition that you deserve and that you're always giving to others. And I do want to say that our teachers, principal of the year, and supervisor, supervisor of the year are well-known in the communities, they've earned their admiration and respect of their students, their staff, the parents, and the community members, and these are the teachers and administrators who work to make the community an important place as well as the school, and they prepare students to be good community members as well. Our administrators and teachers exhibit qualities that set up students to be successful, responsible, and accountable in and out of the classroom, and our strong teachers and leaders are our most valuable resource for our students. So thank you to every one of you here, you are valued more than you even imagine, and especially during a year of a pandemic, you have earned this recognition, so congratulations to you, and it's an honor to have you here to receive your award tonight. Dr. Warren, do you have that?
We've had these ready for quite some time, we've just not been able to read in public to present these. So when your name is called, if you'll just come up, we will present you with your award. Daryl Byrds, Jellicoe Elementary.
Yeah, I have a, I want to make a statement too. Tonight's a special night for me, I love my family, and, you know, we come from a long line of people that have served the school system, and I'm honored to be sitting here, and, you know, you look at Alice Chapman, Smiley Miller, Joan Crutchfield, David Miller, my uncle Rector sat in his chair that I'm honored to be in, and nothing more makes me proud to say that my cousin, Jason Dotson, is a principal here, and I am proud of him, very proud.
Hi, April Campbell.
Jennifer, do you tell us the school you present, what school?
The terrible elementary.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Janet Blue is the teacher of the year at Jack's Royal Middle School, and Ms. Blue is not here tonight, her mother passed away, so she is not here, so we just want to keep Ms. Blue and her family in close contact. Teresa Brock, Valley View Elementary.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, Mary Lynn Arnold. Erin Renoff. May have done this in elementary school once, maybe still won't. Angie Baird, Cottles. Tammy Ayers, LeColan Elementary School. Jessica Crowley, Elk Valley Elementary School. Okay, Dave Johnson, principal of the year.
And I just want to say a special thank you and congratulations for everything you've done this year, this has certainly been a difficult year, and I could give a teacher of the year, principal of the year, and supervisor of the year award out to everyone in the school system, because everyone has done a great job, and I appreciate you and thank you for such a noble service.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, oh, I'm sorry, yes, I recognize Ms. Heatherly, just about forgot about you.
I would like to ask Steve Morgan and Lisa to join me down here, please. I want to stand up here.
Okay.
That's why I would talk.
You do?
Every year, our Tennessee School Board Association hands out an award for boardsmanship credit. Our board members have a chance to work and to work hard, and this board works hard, and they, they, these credits are given for participation, like in our local community activities, and training, and conferences, and I have been to a lot of conferences with, with this board and these two people, and you will not find them out running around in the halls at the, at the restaurant, getting snacks and things, you'll find them at a round, round table where their notepads are and their pencils, taking notes and bringing it back to our community, to our school system, and I am so proud tonight to give these awards. They were to be given at the Fall District Meeting in September, but you know what happened in the Fall Meeting in, in September, everything was haywire this week, this last year, but now we have an opportunity to recognize these two. Ms. Lisa recognized, before I say that, there's five levels of recognition in the boardsmanship program, and they start out with, with level one, and all of our board members are level one, and level two is the next level, they have level three, level four, and level five is the most difficult one to achieve, and you have to do a portfolio, and, and it's a whole lot more difficult to get to that point, and I would like to recognize Johnny Birch because he reached that level five, nineteen, 2019, if it was, and I got mine a hundred years ago, so we've got something to be proud about with our, with our board members working so hard. And Steve Morgan, this is your pin and your certificate for level two, let's all. And this is for Lisa, and she's level three, there's your pin and, and your certificate. She told me one time about a month ago that she wanted to be Fay Heatherly when she grew up, so you're there. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fay, congratulations, Lisa and Steve. Okay, now moving on to the consent agenda, we have an addendum, I think it's B1, chest type freezer at Jellicoe Elementary. What's the pleasure of the board on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Lester, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Roden, are any questions, comments? Cast your vote. Anyone wish to change the vote? Reveal the vote.
And I will make this quick, but I do want to let everyone know that the summer learning camps have been submitted in ePlan. Upon that approval, we will begin summer camps, the summer learning camp is June 2nd, that will be four days a week, ending June 24th. Bus transportation will be provided, and the summer learning camps can take place at all schools except Jack's Royal Middle School and Jellicoe High School, there was not enough enrollment at those two sites to offer that. SR3 is due in ePlan on August 1st, that was put on hold, loading that into ePlan for a while, because as it has happened this past year, there are changes last minute, so we're still working on that, and we will be working on plans and scheduling meetings to continue to prioritize the needs of the school system and school district for planning purposes with that money. Some good news that I received late last night, the General Assembly recently approved additional funds to support transportation needs for summer learning camps, Campbell County has been allocated $92,867.66. We submitted the intent to apply for that application this morning, and that will open up an ePlan on May 17th, and we'll get that budgeted. The EPL harmless legislation did pass, I will begin my meetings with Richard at Finance next week, and we'll start planning for the upcoming school year. Wanted to remind everyone, I mentioned it last month, that we are participating in Grow Your Own with LMU, where we will, any of our assistants who hold bachelor degrees can complete coursework with LMU at no charge for life center in English, biology, chemistry, physics, business history, mathematics, physical education, and visual arts, and they can do a special add-on endorsement, so I'm beyond excited to be able to offer that to our teaching assistants. And I do want to update everyone on the fire alarm system at Campbell County High School. I want to remind everyone, I guess, especially being in a classroom or in a school, we're used to things moving at a very fast pace, you think that if you put it on your to-do list and you can check it off at the end of the day, or the longest, the end of the week, and that's not the case. And the fire alarm at CCHS is an example of that, we've been working on that for quite some time. The pre-bid for the fire alarm was held, fire alarm system at CCHS was held today, and the timeline for that bid was on the agenda months ago, but we had to have an architect put the specs together, then we sent the specs to the fire marshal for review, the fire marshal reviewed those specs, they sent them back for revisions, the architect made those revisions, they were finally approved, they were put out today for pre-bid, the bids will open, come back in and it be opened on June the 2nd, we will place the bids on the June 8th board agenda, and, but the present fire alarm that is at Campbell County High School must be maintained until the new system is in place, and the main intent is to get the fire alarm system completed before school starts, and the timetable is the largest factor in accepting the bid. So anyway, that, that is all I have to report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fields, any questions for the director? I didn't know if there'd been none, recognize Finance.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you last month.
That's okay. I wanted to give an update on the legislative at the General Assembly, it closed last week with finishing their business for the year, they, TSBA is going to have a webinar that is going to go over all of the bills that, that were passed, but there were eight bills that, that TSBA sponsored, and they were all eight passed. One of them was that the out-of-state teachers that move here can be granted their same level of license from the state they came from without having to go through all the bells and whistles and hoops to get that license. And then another thing is, the funding for the BEP is not going to be any less than it was for last year, for the 2021. And then another thing. And then another thing was the, oh, the unused textbooks can be used in, for technology, and that was just a few of them, but, but you'll be getting the email from TSBA that gives the date for the webinar, and if you wanted to listen in on that, it's always interesting and very informative. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Karen.
In your packet, you will find the findings of the March 31st. The 141 general purpose school fund, cash for the trustee is $11,403,000. Revenues are at 8.1% and expenses are at $57,000. The 142 school field, field project, cash for the trustee, $883,000. Revenues are at 51.8% and expenses are at $51.8. The 143, the 144, cash for the trustee, $1,303,757. And revenues are at 10.1% and expenses are at $16,000.
Do I hear a motion to approve, approve the monthly financial?
I'll approve.
Motion by Ms. Craig Morton, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Laston, do I hear a second? Any questions? Cast your vote. Anyone wish to change the vote? Reveal the vote.
[inaudible]. Craig Moore, yes. Fields, yes. Heatherly, yes. Leslie, yes. Lester, yes. Miller, yes. Morgan, yes. Roger, yes. Motion passed.
Okay, next item is to approve the budget amendments. You have those in your packet. What's the pleasure of the board?
We can.
We can?
The school system has received funding from the government, the first program, and these funds are being appropriated.
All righty, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Roden.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hiddley, any questions? Call or roll? Oh, reveal, cast your vote. Anyone wish to change the vote? Reveal the vote.
[inaudible]. Fields, yes. Heatherly, yes. Leslie, yes. Lester, yes. Miller, yes. Morgan, yes. Roger, yes. Motion passed.
The school system has received E-Plan recovery proceeds related to the modular field house at Hill Island Elementary School, and needs to desire to incorporate a portion of these funds for capital projects. And the E-Plan company has also processed funds relative to projects covered, and removal and disposal of the modular unit and outstanding appropriate appropriations.
Mr. Chairman, I approve.
All righty, motion by Ms. Roden, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Morgan. Now, where, where are they going to have the field house? Somebody asked me that last night at the commission. Do they have adequate space for the, like, storage for the?
Well, they'll have to use what's part of the basketball.
Okay, but they do have a place?
Yeah.
Okay. All righty, cast your vote. Anyone wish to change the vote? Reveal the vote.
[inaudible]. Fields, yes. Heatherly, yes. Leslie, yes. Lester, yes. Morgan, yes. Roger, yes. Roger, yes. Motion passed.
At the 5th, the school project grant operate on a D F R S basis, and funds are required to be saved in the state of Kansas, and Campbell County schools to be non-credit measures on a monthly basis. The bed project grant operates with a cash payment system at various times throughout the fiscal year to slow turnaround time for reimbursement from state to state. And the G A P principal consider a cash payment system to be sound to be a deficiency in current control, and Campbell County will be paying for it. The guidance will operate in favor of the cash payment.
All righty, do I hear a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. Will you approve?
Thank you, Ms. Hiddley. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any questions?
Yes. If I might, Chairman. Where is this money coming? What part, in other words, coming out of 141, which is school projects, but going into federal? So this is legit for us to take a million dollars out of there and move it over?
We already have a million dollars there, and the reason we have to move more is because of the unit, you know, because we want to have a 141 already to the million dollars.
And it's come out of what line item in 141?
It's a million, it'll come out. And it's going to be considered in time, and then the corporate agent will have a 991% of the strength of the other fund, but that's going to be in your hands. And you have to have your cash, and obviously, that means the 142 is going to be in the 143.
Well, are these?
If we do this, I'm sorry. Have we got money to do these purchase orders? I keep hearing we've got purchase orders we're holding on to, and?
What we have to do is to talk with reimbursement rates, and we did trial run this week, and the cash you have checked on, we found that we have the inwards, they do reimbursement on inwards, so it's going to be in the inwards, but we wait a little bit, and we back it, and we've actually done that, and we've got a lot of money for the purchase. So we do have to watch the cash flow, but we're trying to do this.
Okay.
And another thing that you may want to notice, even though we request those money to be changed, we can only give them more respect at a time of our time, so it's that one that we're going to go on the field, we're going to do tomorrow, so we have to wait one week before we can get our money settled. We are going, I think that's the best point.
I do have a question. Explain to me again why we're doing this?
Because right now, the 142 school, with all the new babies that are getting, right now, there's only a million dollars in the cash fund, in the 142 fund, and right now, you've got $2 million worth of purchase.
So all this S R is coming out of 142? All this?
Will be reimbursed for it.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Reimbursed, so that's just cash on pay.
Got you.
Something that's paid.
Sure.
Keep the train rolling.
Is there going to be a problem with the June, what, do we still do cutoffs on May 15th for 141 fund? Is that still your old practice for our purchase orders?
We do, and what our practice is, anything that is still standing at its heading period, we have to void those purchase orders when we use the law.
Okay, so we're, there's not a problem with summer school because it's in June? We, that's all worked out, I think. Okay, has, has Ms. Fields been able to have access to her budget in order to plan for this coming year? Has that been taken care of? Do you have access to it now with finance?
I don't. Have, not to the actual program.
Okay.
Richard brings over whatever we're going over, and that's?
That's it, you don't have the whole?
Yeah, I can see an E, what's an E-Plan?
E-Plan, first.
Right.
And the [inaudible].
Ms. Fields, are there other things that Finance needs to do for you to make your job easier? I know Jeff's not here, but you are his. Nothing we'll talk about tonight.
Okay. We just, you know, we've got this money, we will make sure we can spend it, we have time frames, and I understand, and I'm not saying anything to you, Ms. Karen.
I see, but you don't have this cash?
Yes, I'm sure.
More money, more.
I just can't believe 141 has enough money to throw a million dollars over real easy because I thought we were at one point having money problems, we're going to have money problems. I guess that's.
Probably wouldn't have if we didn't get it reimbursed.
Right, it's a reimbursement, so what, what would happen, what if all this is earned or done with, it's probably something that may have caused it, that's why you're thinking that happens. But there's actually 141.
Okay.
It's just staying there.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roden, Mr. Miller.
With the regards to the projects on the playgrounds, has those been paid for?
They're still on.
So those are going to be coming in delivery pretty soon. They, I got an email today, like, two or three weeks.
Well, it's on the dollar, and it's [inaudible], and like I said, we're going to have $10,000 worth of cash.
Right.
We're getting paid all of that. And then, once those vehicles is coming in, I will get another choice, the most good of the, and this last reimbursement I did, it came in a week.
So with the cutoff on the June 30th, as long as these playgrounds are put in by June 30th, we'll be okay, is that correct?
Well, even if that, even if they're not in the [inaudible].
Okay.
The most of the [inaudible].
No holdup, we can move, okay.
They have a different purchase, and everything has to be on the same bill.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All righty, thank you, Karen. All right, let's see, is that, is that all the budget amendments?
[inaudible].
Okay, we have a motion second, and we better approve that. All right, cast your vote. Anyone wish to change the vote? Reveal the vote.
[inaudible]. 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 Motion passed.
At the 5th, the realignment made, you're being made, written home, date approved, program plan, which realigns our creation to the [inaudible]. With all curators in school's program categories, 71, 150, and 72, 250, being realigned to the regular district program category, 71, 100.
Now, your motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, will you approve?
I do have one question. Tell me, like, the 71, 150, and 72, what, what are those accounts? We just?
All curators in school.
It would be good if we could have those on our report so we could tell what we're looking at, what those accounts, the title to them, because we really never know that.
Well, the [inaudible]. The law kind of gets [inaudible].
Well, if it's not a problem, I'd like to have it where it would be. I mean, it's not a deal breaker, but that's just what I would prefer.
Okay, what would be the [inaudible]?
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion, do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hiddley. Any more questions? Cast your vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Reveal the vote.
[inaudible]. Fields, yes. Heatherly, yes. Leslie, yes. Lester, yes. Morgan, yes. Roger, yes. Roger, yes. Motion passed.
We also have an idea, um, [inaudible].
Yes, Consider Approved Resolution 101 to authorize summer learning camps develop and establish compensation amounts and payment methods for employees working in the summer learning camps, and to establish and implement funding protocols and practices for the summer learning camps, and you have an attachment on that. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we approve that.
Thank you, Ms. Roden, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Fields, any questions? Cast your vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Reveal the vote.
[inaudible]. Fields, yes. Heatherly, yes. Leslie, yes. Morgan, yes. Roger, yes. Roger, yes. Motion passed.
All righty, item C, reviewing of bids, nothing at this time. Okay, C1, C2, and C3, we can take those together. You have those on your addendum, it's, you want to read those, Ms. Hennig?
At the [inaudible] group, against the Campbell County Board of Education, the East City Design Group, consisting of six counties, of the [inaudible] school, one is a [inaudible] [inaudible]. Please confirm the latest call of the [inaudible]. 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 Item C, [inaudible] Thursday, April 3rd, $2,311, received in [inaudible]. T and T [inaudible]. $1,000, $35,000. It's a [inaudible]. No deal, [inaudible]. It's a T and T [inaudible]. It's on a [inaudible]. Item three, [inaudible]. Chicken [inaudible]. That should reach three, which should be [inaudible]. To process $33,589,000. Code Creek [inaudible]. $31,237,000. So it is no deal, [inaudible]. And [inaudible]. It's the only deal.
All righty, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Lester, do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Ms. Hiddley, any questions? Call or roll? Okay, anyone wish to change, let's see, Jeffrey, anyone wish to change their vote? Reveal the vote.
[inaudible]. Fields, yes. Heatherly, yes. Leslie, yes. Lester, yes. Miller, yes. Morgan, yes. Roger, yes. Roger, yes.
All righty, moving on to advertise for bids. Let's see, we got 1A and B. Let's see, that would be, is that the one you wanted, 5 and 6, Gil, of the high school?
[inaudible].
And you have those in your packet.
And on the [inaudible].
And then plus the addendum. What's the pleasure of the board? I have a motion by Mr. Miller, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morgan. Any questions? Call or roll? Reveal, cast your vote. We're going to have to go back to.
It takes a while.